I moved over here. Well, they moved me. I said, Kristin. He said, why does he do this to me? It's crazy.
This is really work session this time.
Runs are long compared to that. I can't get my glasses thing.
Want to be closer to the emergency exit anyway. Or just get locked in like that, the plan.
I have six o'clock, so we will go ahead and get started. And first up, we have a discussion on 7305 CR 160 annexation zoning and major subdivision. I'm gonna do something a little differently tonight. I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to get heard. So we will follow Bob's rules of order, which mean, once someone's spoken, they'll have an opportunity later in the conversation, but I want to make sure others have the opportunity to get heard. So you don't have one or two people speaking and others not having the opportunity to. So we'll start there. Thank you.
Thanks. Hello. Good night and good evening, everybody. I think I've had the chance, of course, to meet the planning commissioners, but for city council, this might be the first time you're seeing me doing any presentations here. So my name is Kristin Hodges, one of the city planners here.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I'll be handling this annexation as it comes in. It's important to note that tonight, this property, 7305 CR 160, this is a pre-application conceptual review. So they have not submitted an application yet for the annexation zoning or major sub. This is just to kind of get initial feedback, gut check. What do you guys think about this plan that the applicant has?
Are you Kristin with a K or C?
It's with a K. N and E. So a little bit of property information overview. And a little bit about the applicant team as well. Kenny Layton, one of our planning commissioners, who is in the applicant side of things and for this part of the presentation tonight. And his partner, Matt Osnus, is their part of the applicant team. Bill Hussey has also been a little bit involved so far in some of the initial plan drawings. They have submitted their conceptual site plan for the annexation zoning and major subdivision of a 2.45 acre property located at 7305 CR 160, also known as Crestone Avenue. The property is within the municipal services area. It's a little hard to tell from this map over here, which is the future land use map, but it's the dotted line that kind of goes, the black circles along the edge of the area there on the map. And then this is the flum, like I said. So it is a part of either R2 or R3 zone district. So this area is intended to be more higher, mid to high residential areas. Thank you. Just a snip from the zoning map showing you kind of what's around this area. A lot of R2 zoning, the golf courses nearby. And then that kind of edge of the property between the hospital and the properties that face Crestone Avenue. You probably are familiar with this. It's where the mesa drops. So there's a pretty steep grade between those zomats there. Little bit of an aerial view for you guys. Still tracing that current city limits, so you guys can orient yourself. Also shows a little bit of the trails going on in the area and shows a little bit of the density. So the concept proposal we're looking at tonight. The applicant has voiced a preference for R2 zoning designation, which, as we saw from the flum, would be one of the appropriate choices for this lot. And they are currently thinking about subdividing into 12 total lots. 10 of those are residential lots. We'll go into what the other two lots are momentarily. Initial concepts that they're showing here, and we have a blown up version of the plat and a few slides as well, show a little bit of single family and duplexes as well. They're thinking right now that the maximum units proposed on the subdivision would be 16. So one of the other lots that is being proposed is shown here in pink. This is one of the residential lots, excuse me. So the developer right now is proposing building two inclusionary housing units, otherwise known as IH units, on this pink lot here on the left. And there's already been some questions from you guys about how the inclusionary housing will be designated as part of the annexation agreement. So I'm just gonna delve into that for just a moment. The inclusionary housing requirements will be dependent on what the applicant ultimately will propose as part of their development. And council has the option to stipulate inclusionary housing requirements within the annexation agreement. The inclusionary housing unit requirements, the counts would increase if the proposed density is also going to increase. So we have a kind of plan right now, but as the proposal may shift, so might our inclusionary housing requirements on the development. One of the things that we will hopefully hear a little bit more from our applicant team tonight is whether or not they plan to develop on the lots. Are they going to build the units? Or are they going to sell the lots off? This will also determine how we stipulate the inclusionary housing agreement. So without trying to throw too much information at you at once, we have to kind of assume that they won't end up building, just in case it does get annexed and the subdivision does not go through. That's true with any annexation. So for this instance, what we would have to do is stipulate the number, or sorry, designate the number of units which would be allowed on each lot throughout the subdivision and development of each of the properties. We've seen this one other place in town. You might remember River Ridge did something similar to this, where they sold off individual lots instead of building on them as part of the, like, a plan development, per se. So what we did for that project was kind of a tabulated breakdown of each lot and how many units would be allowed on each per what they are providing for inclusionary housing units. So for this instance, if they are going to allow 16 total units with a breakdown of one single-family unit on lots 2 through 5, and then duplex dwellings on lots 6 through 10, which are the right half, that would be a total of 16 units. And the tabulation would be, you know, lot 1 is allowed one unit. Lot 2 is allowed two units. Lot 6 is allowed two units. Lot 7 is allowed two units and so forth. And in the agreements, we would have to say, if you are to build more than your designated unit on that lot, you would be subject to the fee in lieu. So I know that was a lot of information, but we can, I'm happy to answer questions about that after the presentation, if you have some. One of the other lots that is not residential is shown here in blue. And that will be a stormwater utility and access easement proposed on this lot. And that's for stormwater detention and things like that. And driveway separation will also meet public works requirement of 30 feet between driveways. Whether or not they're shared or per an individual unit is kind of to be determined. And utility connections are currently available on CR 160. Thank you. One of the other things that is unique about this lot is that we are going to be requiring a multi-use path connection. The trail connection is shown here in the image in orange. And there is an open space dedication proposed in green. This runs the eastern and northern parts of the lot. So the dedicated land is shown in green and just the trail in orange. The intent of this is to connect existing and future trails between the golf course and the hospital. So really just trying to connect that Upper Mesa with the hospital and public lands to the north. This is consistent with the connectivity intent of the Salida Regional Transportation Plan, Comprehensive Plan, et cetera. And one thing that I meant to mention before I even started this presentation, I apologize, was to say that this plat is not the plat that was proposed, that was shown in the memo that you guys received last week. It's very similar, but the trail connection itself was not shown explicitly. And the housing designations were also not shown. So I apologize for not prefacing with that. The reason I'm bringing that up now is because this is also newer to staff. And upon reflection, the Parks and Rec Director has a little bit of concern with how the trail is being proposed on the hospital-owned land, how it kind of goes off the lot there at the top north end. So it's a little tricky because the hospital would have to sign off on that, obviously, if it's on their land. Either way, the developer would be responsible for building this trail. The other part of this is that since the trail is not being proposed within a majority of the dedicated land, it's tough to call this dedication. What's the word?
Extraordinary.
Yes, thank you. It's hard to qualify this as an extraordinary dedication. In addition to that, the open space dedication, the land itself does not necessarily meet the criteria that we have stipulated. So, you know, understanding that this is a concept and it's still a little bit up in the air how it's all going to be determined, there could still be open space fees due on these lots, depending on how the open space and trail dedications kind of shake out. And I think Diesel is on the phone, too, if we have any extra questions about that. So this is my last slide. And I just kind of wanted to show you a blow up of the plat that's being proposed, as well as that trail section, which is shown there in the blue dashed box. And tonight, we're just kind of looking for any feedback that you guys have, initial comments regarding the annexation, the zoning, or the major subdivision of the slot. And kind of just indicate if you think they should move forward with their application process. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Who has questions?
Isn't there already a trail connection from the mesa to that hospital trail, just a little further out?
Kristin, would you mind going to the third slide?
This one?
Or one more? Yeah. This shows it a little bit, but right now, it kind of follows Crestone Avenue to where it turns into the county road and then has a really sharp switch back. It also goes down to Franz Lake and then into the county land and back.
So why do we need another connection?
There's a... Yeah, it's about half a mile away on either side. Crestone Avenue is on one side. There's a really big piece of this. And Bill Hussey, actually, they have a presentation as well, the applicant team does. And he actually has an image showing the trail connections. I should have included that, and I apologize. But you can kind of see how far apart those two connections on either side of the mesa is. One of the other things that the city is proposing in the near future is a trail connection on the very western side of the golf course that's gonna run right along that property line. And so to kind of go to the edge of that and then have to split, you know, half a mile in either direction is just a little drastic.
Anyone else? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So it's, they're proposing 16 units?
Yes. Well, they're proposing lot size for 16 units right now. Kristin, could you go to the very last slide? These kind of show, I know it's kind of hard to read, but on the very far left-hand side is lot 1. That's what they're showing as the inclusionary housing lot, proposing currently one duplex, so two total units. And then going right from there, you have a single-family, a single-family, a single-family, a single-family, and then six lots, five lots, which could be duplexes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we bring the applicants up? You obviously hit all the key points.
Great. Hopefully it wasn't TMI.
Yeah.
Happy to answer more questions if they come up later. You guys want to come on up?
Thanks for meeting with us tonight. My name's Kenny Layton. So my partner, Matt Osnus. We just real briefly wanted to show a couple pictures of some homes we've been building in the area. Many of you are familiar with me from the planning commission, but have maybe never seen what we've been, you know, what we've been doing locally. So I don't, we can advance through these relatively quickly. And we just kind of show those to show, like, we don't have finalized plans or anything for the exteriors of these homes, but, you know, that's, we would hope to provide somewhat of a similar look and feel there. Bill's got more technical kind of details presentation to go through real quick. You know, I would just mention in terms of what's gonna be built, are intense to build these. We would also hope to be able, our plan is to build two of the IH units to cover any requirements. So even if we did, you know, single-family on those lots, we would still be providing two of those IH units. The hospital trail open space, you know, that has always been communicated from the city and something that was a desire from the city. So we're, you know, we're pretty flexible on that in terms of how it's laid out. And I think, you know, we've always been told that we would be expected to build that trail. So that's, that was our best rendition of what we thought was the most appropriate way to kind of connect down to the hospital.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil Hussey, I'm the applicants engineer. Thanks for taking the time to take a look at our project, give feedback at this early stage. So Kristin covered most of this. We can go to the next one. You know where the property is. It's 2.45 acres. We talked municipal services area. We're in it. We can go to the next one. And flum, we can skip as well. And surrounding zoning. The only thing I'll add to the discussion about the zoning is that we're showing here an average, you know, we have 2.45 acres. For 16 units is 0.15 acres per unit. And kind of the blend in the neighborhood, you see the larger R2 lots on the north side of County Road 160. Those are roughly half acre, on the order of half acre lots. You have Cottonwood Green, which is about 0.2 acres. So getting pretty close to what we're proposing here. And then Crestone Mesa to the west, those lots go down to 0.09 acres. And just to not mislead you, that's an average, including the open space for our development, is 0.15 acres per unit. This is the city's trails plan. The only little Sharpie gate moment I had was that purple one right south of our development to emphasize that there is a trail through Cottonwood Green. It's a pretty nice trail. And then you have the Space Invaders parcel there, which we all assume will develop someday. And then you could potentially be looped through to the County Road 140 trail. And this makes a nice direct access to get down the mesa. And when you're a pedestrian, I mean, 100 feet matters quite a bit to you in terms of getting in your car or walking. So we really like the idea that this is designated on the city's long-term planning to build this trail. And we're not sure about the route yet. We may be able to keep it on our property for more of it. The application will come with full details on what the hospital plan development designated that land for. I think it is designated as open space in the plan development that they did six or seven years ago. And that is all for this slide. This is just a copy of our topographic survey to show you that, you know, we have this done. We didn't find any major red flags from it. You can go on. That is... Oh, I think one more nuance about the stormwater. Yeah, if you could stay there, I think that's the best one to show it. The lot that has the longer driveways on it, on the front of these lots to the east, a little more nuance to the reason for that is because we've had issues in the past where a stormwater easement gets designated. And, you know, we can design it to detain stormwater, but then the property owner puts a fence around it and fills it in, and it doesn't work. So it's much more enforceable for there to be a lot that's designated specifically for stormwater. With that, staff recommended that we write into the annexation agreement some language about setbacks, so that we can have nice even 20-foot setbacks across here and not have it jump back 20 feet due to this stormwater thing. And that is all I have. Take questions for myself or the applicants.
Any questions for Bill?
You said the size of lots was 0.15 acres with the open space?
Yeah, averaged in.
What's the size of just the buildable area?
The, oh, the buildable areas, I did not calculate. If we are able to zoom way in, I have some dimensions on some of them. I think the more trapezoidal ones actually probably have the dimensions. But we are down, like, our single-family lots approach the minimum for R2, which is 5063. And hopefully that kind of helps you scale. And then our multifamily, or duplex lots, our duplex lots approach the minimum, like, that smallest one, the first one with the stormwater lot in front of it on the west, there, lot 6, that is the minimum to be able to do a duplex conversion in R2. So those are, you know, some of those duplex conversion ideas are more in line with the density you're seeing in Crestone Mesa. Again, just trying to blend, you know, the surrounding developments together with this. The other thing about R2 is some of you have probably heard me call it the single-family and duplex zone. And that's because it's really all you can do there with the parking coverage and other things in the current code. And that's specifically why we're requesting it here. You know, we got the question from staff, do you want to consider R3? And it's like, no, let's not open up any possibilities of anything crazy happening here. We want to build single-family and duplexes. So R2 is the request. Yeah.
So, so you're, back to the stormwater. So 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Does the lot itself actually go to, I'm looking at the setback, too. So I'm curious, so the building envelope setback starts right at that end of the driveway, but that, from there on, hand is there to handle stormwater?
Correct.
And not handling stormwater from the other lots as well?
Yeah, we only put it at the downstream end of the development. If the calc shake out that, I did some rough stormwater calculations on this. I don't think we need that all the way across. We'll just keep it to the more downhill lots where you can be more efficient detaining stormwater. And the whole zero lot line thing, like, where does the eve go? Where does the footer go? We'll figure that out with staff, that maybe there's a foot in there, that it's not like a complete zero lot line.
And would that, that's not gonna interfere with any utility easement or anything?
No, we'd anticipate a 10-foot front lot easement across all of these. So that's a good question. You do have to be conscious of keeping those utilities towards the, towards the street so that you can get down and get enough depth for the stormwater detention without conflicting with dry utilities. So that, yeah, that we need to pay attention to carefully, design and construction. We typically don't give vertical information on dry utilities, but we definitely need to be careful about that in this case. Good question. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. This is a question for the applicant, or maybe Kristin. Did I hear right that the applicant will be developing the trail?
I mean, that's, that's something we're anticipating being asked to do. Yeah. And we've anticipated, yeah, we're planning on doing that.
And then, and maybe this is a question for Diesel, but do we have any restrictions around that trail development? As a city, I know there are things in our city code that are not in our city code that I would want to see happen, especially with consideration for the other trail and the weed propagation that has happened, invasive weeds propagated up that trail mainly from the hospital's kind of construction soil disturbance there. So I'm just wondering if we have regulations around, like, who builds that trail? Like, do you have to hire a licensed trail builder, like Tony Boone? Or Salida Mountain Trails, somebody like that to build it? Because you can do a lot of damage with the trail, too, right? Like, cause erosion on the hillside, things like that. And I'm just wondering what the restrictions are on that.
You know, I, I don't know. But certainly, we want to take those into account and want to kind of collaborate on, you know, the best way to do that, for sure.
It's a little early for me to be that far in the weeds, but always. But it does concern me. I, the views there are million-dollar views. And so it's really nice to see so many units getting that view. I think the public will miss the view from the trail on the other side of 160 and on the road. So the trail through the development is a nice kind of compromise there for those views. But I just want to make sure that it's done right. And with consideration for a seed budget for native seeds to fight invasive weed mitigation. And that's not in the code, as I, as far as I know right now. So it would be great to see the developer just make a commitment to that.
Sure.
One question, maybe, or just a follow-up?
Yeah, sure.
So, and this may be changed because of what Kristin was talking about with the open space dedication. But in our packet, it said that that back lot going off the mesa would eventually be basically dedicated to the city. And so if that's still, is that still the plan? Or is that dependent on whether it's an exceptional contribution?
You know, the, I think, again, we're open to the best solution there. Whatever it takes to kind of build that trail appropriately. And, you know, I don't, we don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other.
Well, I mean, the building of the trail, you know, I understand you're planning on doing. But after that, if it's dedicated to the city, then I would think the city would be responsible for weed mitigation and those kinds of things after the trail was built and the parcel was dedicated.
We could assign the vice chair of the planning commission to do the weed mitigation for us.
As long as we know it's in good hands.
Do you know if Diesel is online?
He is online.
Diesel, I don't know if this would be kind of a good time for you to chime in on any of these questions or points that have been made so far, but it could be helpful to hear from you.
And Diesel, you need to un...
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Good. You can hear me. Yeah. You guys may remember, I brought to council about a month ago a parkland and open space dedication design criteria and then a construction specifications manual. I'm looking at it right now, and we don't have construction specifications for trails in that manual. So that is something that I would add before I brought it back to council for final approval. And that would address all of those concerns. And so thank you for pointing that out. We can certainly add that before we bring it back to council. I think a commitment from the developer in this case to those things, correct grade, erosion control, native seeding and regrowth is totally appropriate and probably acceptable to keep the project moving forward. I would say what I am most concerned about right now is the proposed open space dedication. And again, according to the manuals that I, that I brought to council in a work session, that would be unacceptable as open space or parkland dedication. It's, it is not accessible to the, one of the design criteria is that a park or open space dedication is accessible by a public road. There is nothing explicitly written in our proposed criteria about slope and kind of the grade of the land. But in this case, I would see this as, this is a liability for the city to take on, especially with that dump area. There is no benefit to the community for the city to take that, the open space. The trail, yes. The open space, no. So we would, we would take the trail and do the math to see how much open space would be required, how much open space the trail counts for towards that requirement, and then proportionally apply fees in lieu on top of that. proportionally apply fees and lieu on top of that. And I know that that might be a little bit of a complicated concept, but just looking at it right now, there's no benefit to the community for accepting that green lot. So I just want to make sure that I, I state that out here unless, unless someone sees a reason why we should.
And one possible solution might be to just contract with Salida Mountain Trails to do it because they have now like a bank of knowledge and experience to doing trails the right way in recent years. So just going with a knowledgeable entity like that would, might simplify it.
Who did the hospital trail? I mean, the hospital.
They hired somebody with an excavator and plowed that puppy through there.
Okay.
There was not a lot of, there was no design that was done.
Didn't think so. Yeah, that part of the trail is super steep. Yeah, it's just kind of there. So yeah.
Pampans and an ice axe.
Right, yeah, so some, somebody with some knowledge on that would be appreciated.
What's up with the dump area that Diesel mentioned?
I mean, I'm probably, I'm probably most familiar. I'm not exactly sure what he means by dump area. You know, like, like a lot of ridges, there is some refuse over the years that have, has been, you know, like mostly, what I've seen is mostly old concrete on the, like picture, you know, open field, you pull your truck up to the edge of the ridge and you dump your concrete tailings or something off the edge. But it's, it's not like a, it's not a dump. It's not a landfill.
Yeah, to clarify, I, I do believe that they got an, actually, I'm not sure if an environmental assessment of that area, you can see where it's dug in and maybe if you scroll, a aerial photo, you can, right there with the contours, it appears that at some point someone dug into the side of the hill ridge at some point. We speculated a while ago that maybe it was a shooting range, maybe it was a dump. I mean, we would certainly want to take a look at what is in there a little more closely and probably reach out to our, to our local population, see if anybody knows what, what was going on there. It could also just be drainage and erosion, but we, we speculated when we were out there years ago contemplating this trail for the first time, that that was used as a, as a dump. And maybe it's all cleaned up, but we would, we would want to check that out.
One, I mean, we are, we're getting a phase one right now, so, you know, maybe it's TBD as well.
Yeah, I think so.
In terms of what, you know, what we might need to discover.
Yeah.
I'm just going to add one, one thing because the, the question did come up and I'm sure the applicants are wondering if the decision is not to accept the open space, can you go to the one that shows the green up there?
Was it in yours, Kristen?
So, you know, our code currently requires that there's .02 acres per unit proposed that gets dedicated as open space if there's an open space requirement. So, yeah, that one right there. Obviously, this represents maybe about, you know, 20% or more of the entire lot, which would be greater than what the current code requires and greater than what is proposed in the, in the future new code for open space dedication. If, as Diesel says, this is inappropriate to take as dedicated open space because of all the, the factors, you know, what we might find in the ground or the contours, the accessibility of the public, et cetera. Just another way of calculating the open space contribution could be, for instance, taking the entire area of the, of the trail itself. It, it's an option, it's not all shown on their property, but if the developer is going to be required to actually build it, that's one way that we could apply this particular requirement, just take that entire area, including the easement areas around the trail itself. And then anything left over then could be applied as a fee and lieu based off of the overall percentage that be required. So just a little clarification.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
For the inclusionary housing, I know it's an option to maybe sell it to the housing trust or maybe the housing authority, but you mentioned that you were pretty set on building those two units yourself. And just knowing that we need units now, I think pushing that off to another organization maybe isn't the best. So I really appreciate you saying that you wanted to just go ahead and do that. And then I noticed on the, on these, some of these maps, it says the maintenance for the multi-use path is performed either by the city of Salida or the hospital. And I think we should take that burden off of the hospital. They aren't building it. They have to approve it and it's on their land, but ultimately they are not required to be building this. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Anything else this evening? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pianzi.
Thanks for coming, planning commission.
You guys can stick around if you want, though. You don't have to feel like you need to leave.
Chicken, some water.
We've got to talk about rights.
Wastewater.
Certainly won't pay you if you did. Keeping high knees all the way out.
You are on.
I am on, which means Bruce Kimmel with Ellers is on. I will do a brief introduction. Staff have been working with Ellers Inc. on updating our rate study for the water and wastewater enterprise funds. That is something that is best practice to do periodically. What the purpose of it is, is to make sure we are charging fees that will support future needs of the wastewater, those important utilities, the wastewater and the, the water fund. And we have also been working with Pontius Springs in, you know, the, the negotiation of what the, the fees would be for the system development fees. Now, system development fees have not changed in over 10 years, so we are well due for, for this change and for this look. And I am going to let Bruce Kimmel talk you through the rate study. I do want to remind you that he was here giving you updates on the study in January of last year as well as May of last year.
And I just, Bruce, before you start, I just wanted to make sure anyone that's listening in that as we go through this presentation, you're going to see some future big-ticket items, but they're not coming out of the general fund. They come out of one or the other of the two enterprise funds.
Correct. And these funds operate like a business. Something I should point out to you, the city itself, for its parks and for its buildings also have to pay water and wastewater fees. We pay the same rates everybody else does.
As does everybody up here.
It is, it is, they operate as a business and they have to support, there's no tax money going into that. They have to support themselves with the fees that they charge.
And Amy, if I could ask, the, what we're looking at here is the same that was sent to us.
Yes.
So we can look on our computers and it'll-
Yes, yes, exactly. We've made some very slight changes in a few of the slides, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council members. Bruce Kimmel with Ellers. And can you hear me okay all the way from Minnesota?
Yes.
Can.
Very good. Great, if you can go to the next slide, please. So there's 50 slides here and I won't belabor all of them and I'm hoping that you'll appreciate that. But we did want to give you and the public an overview of the system development fee study that we completed on the city's behalf, as well as the water and sewer rate study. And also just provide a little bit of background information. Some of these slides I'll go fairly quickly through, others I'll spend a little more time on. If you have questions at any point, please interrupt me. This is really meant to, you know, answer all of your questions. And also sometimes I, you know, working in this field every day can assume something is pretty obvious or intuitive and that may not be the case. And so if you think clarification or elaboration would be warranted at any point, please let me know.
And I would just say, if anyone has a question, just feel free to shout it out because I probably won't see you doing it. He certainly won't, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Very good. So next slide, please. All right. So as Amy was just describing, you know, you do have these two enterprise funds, the water fund and the sewer fund. Pretty self-explanatory, but these are what we call enterprise funds. So they operate as municipal businesses, if you will, quasi-businesses. Of course, they are providing a public good, so there really isn't a profit motive here at all. But the intent here is always that the utility fees and charges are sufficient to pay the cost of the utility, both the capital costs and the operating costs. Can go forward and go forward again. So most of you are aware of what the water utility does, but it's quite a lot, right? And it's really important, as we've seen in various places east of Salida in the United States. Of course, you're taking water from aquifers and lakes and rivers. There's water treatment that happens to make it safe for consumption. Storage in towers and reservoirs is critical to make sure there's enough flow and demand and, and supply to meet demand. We saw what happened in California, unfortunately, when there was too much demand for too little supply. And then distribution, the water mains, all of the different pipes that go to houses and, and commercial buildings and institutions in the city of Salida to provide that clean drinking water. Next slide, please. The sewer utility, of course, collects wastewater from homes and businesses. It treats it for pollutants and then distributes that cleaned water into the environment. All right. So the purpose of the studies, I won't go through all these bullet points, but you can see what we are trying to do. First and foremost is to maintain the financial health of the water in the sewer utilities. Also informing the capital planning, there are lists of projects. And as you pointed out, Mayor, that these aren't all set in stone, they're still evolving, but they are going to be funded from these utilities and they cost a lot of money. So it's important that we get it right in terms of projecting what kind of fees and charges will be necessary in order to pay for those projects as well as operations. Next, next slide. You can see here from the sort of teal portion of each of these pie charts that your capital expenditures and then paying principal and interest on bonds that you will sell for those capital projects is, is the lion's share of, of the expenditures in both the water and the sewer funds. And this is not at all unusual. So I want to make really clear that, you know, communities age, infrastructure ages, it lasts a long time, but it doesn't last forever. And so Salida is not unique at all in terms of needing to address its capital priorities and capital needs for both systems. And I would actually say that you are doing a lot better than a lot of other cities and that you are forward-looking, your staff is forward-looking, really taking a hard look at what needs to happen in the next five years, 10 years and so on. And as you may know, if you, you know, geek out on public infrastructure like I do, most of the United States has this massive backlog of deferred maintenance. And so the fact that you are tackling this is really to your credit. It's, it's, you know, it'd be easy to keep kicking the can down the road, but you're not and you're looking at what really needs to happen to keep both of these systems safe and effective. Next slide, please. All right, so here are some of the projects that have been identified. These are sort of the, the major projects in addition to more-
I'm glad they're not the minor projects.
Go ahead.
Say the joke again.
He didn't hear you.
Okay, sorry. It's all good.
He said he's glad they weren't minor projects.
Oh, yeah, right. If these were the minor projects, we would be having a whole different discussion about the major ones. So you can see, I won't go through all of these, but these aren't surprises to any of you, I'm sure. The biggest one, of course, is projected, you know, for roughly seven, eight, nine years from now, that being the water treatment plant replacement with an estimated cost in today's dollars of about $45 million. Next slide, please. On the sewer side, not nearly as much that's needed in terms of major projects, although you are always doing minor projects along the way. Of course, the one that you're most familiar with is the sewer interceptor along Highway 50 from Plancha Springs with an estimated cost of about $14.6 million. Next slide, great. So system development fees is the first or one of the two studies that we worked with your team on. If we go to, go to the next slide. What we really worked from here, and you'll remember this maybe from some of the discussions we had in 2024, is that we're, we're basing these fees on equivalent residential units or ERUs. And these ERUs are based on a combination of flow data and policy. And you'll see how we, thank you very much for, for going ahead, how we sort of proposed just slice and dice fractions and multiples of ERUs based on different types of development within the city of Salida. So an ERU estimates the, the use of 180 gallons per day. That's based on city engineering data. And we look at multifamily property, properties and ADUs, assuming that they would discharge about 90% of what a single-family home would. So a multifamily unit therefore would be at a .9 ERU. And in affordable house, using affordable housing unit, as previously calculated, would be at .4 ERUs. And then commercial properties, because they are attracting a flow of people, either people who work there and/or customers are assumed to have a, a multiple of 2.5 ERUs per connection. So when we looked at, or when we were tasked with maybe making some changes to the ERUs from previous discussions, we wanted to make sure, and this was communicated to us by the city, to address concerns about affordability for multifamily rental properties, i.e. making sure that we're not doing anything that would retard or restrict the ability of developers to, and contractors to build those properties and then to ease administration of the SDF system. So what we look to do then is to conform the water and the sewer ERU calculations. I won't, you know, read all of this off the slide, but you can see that we're looking at establishing multifamily and ADU units at .5 ERUs for both water and sewer while maintaining the affordable housing units at .4 ERUs. So still maintaining a, a slight benefit there for those affordable or attainable housing units. One thing we want to point out is that when we were looking at the capital costs and what needed to be covered by the SDFs, we have, you'll see this on a future slide, we have set increases in the sewer SDF charges for the next five years, starting this year, 2025 through 2029. But then after the first five years, the escalation will be 4.5% per year as opposed to what we had previously estimated at 3.5. So a little bit more in the out-years of the 10-year time horizon, but still substantially the same. Okay, so for 2025, the sewer SDFs, you can see here the, the proposed increases from 24 to 25. And, and that we've, we've made some modifications again to conform the water and the sewer. So single-family and affordable single-family are going up a little bit. Condos are going down and affordable condos are going up a little bit to bring everything into conformance. Still, as you'll see on a later slide, these, these SDFs, these system development fees- these SDFs, these system development fees are quite a bit lower, um even with these changes than in a lot of comparable communities. So I don't mean to poo-poo this, you know, of course, any increase is 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 a challenge, but um you know, you're not certainly pricing yourself out of of the market in terms of what developers pay or contractors pay, and you're still on the lower end of that spectrum. Next slide, please. So here you can see how they would escalate from twenty twenty-five um over the next five years. Um, and then, as I noted, four point five percent in twenty thirty and beyond. So the capital costs to recover with the water SDF um would be uh the water storage tank, the Mesa's tank, half of the Harrington ditch pipeline, thirty percent of the airport storage tank, and twenty-five percent of the new water treatment plant, um that is, as we noted earlier, several years out. But you're you're looking to uh really uh capture, you know, a chunk, but not all of the costs of these major capital projects from the SDF. The rest, of course, would come from the regular uh water fees. Okay. One thing that we wanted to stress is that we've tried to be conservative in terms of our growth assumptions for the city. So we use a search, we used an uh an average of uh the last six years. And the numbers here, you can see, reflect the average growth that you had over the last six years, fifty single-family units, twenty-six multifamily units, and seven uh commercial and or industrial connections per year. But we only used seventy-five percent of tho- those totals um in the ERU uh or SDF study. So if you actually have more growth, um, we would be able to look at reducing those fees from what I just outlined for you, um, making that de- future development, um, you know, less expensive. Uh, but again, we didn't want to assume that you would keep going at the exact same pace as you have for the last six years on average. And so that's why we did discount that growth factor to seventy-five percent. Okay, on the water side, we've covered the uh the sewer side, but the water SDFs for Salida in twenty twenty-five, you can see um the the changes for a single family, affordable, single-family condos and affordable condos. And again, it was really the condo um classification that uh is seeing the biggest change in order to bring everything into conformance with the ERU sort of framework, if you will, that I described earlier.
Hey, Bruce, can I just interject something for people that are listening at home? And that is that um the system development fees pay for the really large projects. In general, it's the user fees, i.e. the, you know, the monthly water bill pay for operations and have much, have small rate increases relatively speaking. So anyone listening to this, I'm just.
Yeah, thank you for raising that. And I should also just stress maybe early and often that all of this S- SDF talk is just for new development, right? It's it's not for existing customers. Um, we will talk about water and sewer rates in a moment, but all of this is just about the types of fees that are collected upfront for new development within the city of Salida. Okay. Uh, my my colleague Gene and other folks on the analytical side really love these charts um showing uh cash versus target cash. Um, you can see that um we're doing well in terms of sustaining cash balances that are are sort of above the sort of industry metrics or or thresholds for capital and debt reserves. Um, but and this is the the big, the 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 big caveat, you can see how that balance, uh the the blue bars start to go down after twenty thirty-three, and that's really where um you will be using some of that cash from the the SDSF reserves for that water treatment plant. Um, again, about twenty-five percent, at least twenty-five percent of that as of that water treatment plant being paid from cash um that's built up in this development fee account. So um you know, if you went out of more years, you'd see those bars coming in for kind of a soft landing with what we estimate would be the the minimum cash targets that are the the orange area of this chart. All right, so some uh fee comparisons. I won't go through all of these, and I know the the legend on the bottom is a little bit hard or a lot hard to read. But you can see that we've got um a bunch of comps everywhere from Aspen to Breckenridge to Cannon City to Carbondale to Fairplay, to Glenwood, Gunnison, Frisco, Montrose, and Salida on the far right-hand side. So you can see you're below sort of those averages of other um communities in, I guess mostly the the um the western side of the state. And if we go on to the next slide, this is the system development fees for a twenty-four unit market rate condo building. Um, again, you are below the mark or in comparison with a quite a few of the communities here. Next slide. This is an apartment building. Again, um in case you're wondering, some of those those bars more on the left-hand side that are way above the average are Breckenridge, are both Breckenridge as well as Aspen, and then Fairplay and Frisco are uh more on the right-hand side, but a about the average line as well. Next slide. On the affordability side of things, this is, I think, maybe of of interest to the the community and the council. Um, we are really, you know, trying to keep things affordable for the development of new attainable housing um within the community. So your fees are certainly in line with that goal. Next slide. And that's the end of this part. Uh, we still have a few more slides to go on the water and and sewer side of things, but do you have any questions for me about the system development fees and the work we did here to try to bring those fees into alignment and still uh, you know, advance the city's policy goals?
Bruce, this all looks great. The question that I have that's not answered here is, you know, we're looking at the other communities. Where are they with having to rebuild their uh plant? You know, how are they doing?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, well, I can. I I I I know this is being recorded, so I can't tell you too many tales out of school here, but um le- let's say that some are kind of whistling past the proverbial graveyard. Um, some are actually tackling the big ticket items like Salida is. Some are kind of in between, kind of, you know, doing some, also getting their arms around some, knowing that, you know, duct tape and chewing gum is only gonna last so long. Um, so it's really, in my experience, it's really a broad a- a- array of 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 municipal responses. Some, you know, in complete denial, others that are on top of it, more like you are, and and then a whole lot in between.
Thank you.
Any other questions before he moves on? I think you're good to go.
Okay. All right, water and sewer rate study. We're having fun now. Okay. So um what we've done here is is an exercise somewhat similar to the SDF study, but really focused more on operations and then also debt service of these enterprise funds, both the water and the sewer. So uh really, a a a key measure of fiscal health is making sure that you have appropriate cash balances at all times, that you know, you're not depleting them beyond a certain level and sort of the the industry standard that we try to guide our clients to is having six months of operations in in reserve as well as one year of debt service, so that if something big happens, i- either you're either a a major unexpected expense or let's say you have an extremely wet year, um and you you people aren't using water or something else happens to really disrupt the revenue stream, that you're not holding the bag, right? That you have a a decent um uh wo- uh chest of 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 reserves with for both operations and debt service. And of course, we want to make sure that we're funding all those capital projects in the CIP. So the SDF charges are are a portion of that, but then water and sewer rates are the remainder. And then uh you can see the assumptions that we we used on expenses. Um, ex- expecting, you know, operating expenses to inflate two to three percent per year, but capital costs, unfortunately, we're assuming will inflate on average about four and a half percent per year. So uh I think we've kind of covered this, but the goals for the URS were really to make sure that you could fund those large capital projects, albeit with the contributions from the SDF. And then to restructure rates uh to really have both um to restructure, to li- take a look at and restructure both your fixed and variable rates, and then your conservation rates for water and to maintain fund stability. All right, you've seen um these projects in in the previous slides, but uh on one slide, you can see both on the water and the sewer side, you've got about in total about a hundred million dollars of projects in today's dollars that are lined up over the next ten years. So a a lot to work through, but it's, I think you'll find here, i- i- it is viable. You just really need to work the plan in terms of mo- monitoring the cost of these projects, monitoring your operating costs, and then making sure that the the water rates and sewer rates are keeping pace with what's needed. Um, why don't we, so you you can see also that we make some uh bonding assumptions. These can always change. And and I should note, Mayor and council members, one of the great things about this kind of analysis is that you know, it's a it's a dynamic sort of living process, right? We we use these assumptions on what things are going to cost and when you're going to do them. But um ideally, you'll be looking at at least at the staff's level and then also the council level at these assumptions on at least annual basis and making adjustments as as appropriate. So we don't profess to have a perfect crystal ball, um. But you know, we we think that this projection makes sense, and then as you make annual adjustments, you can make sure that it's keeping up with current expectations in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and so on. Um, yes, great, perfect. So another one of these charts that my colleagues love, um, this is the water fund projected balance. You can see the target working capital in orange and then operating in SDF cash balances um in sort of teal and blue there. And you can see that in order to make this happen, we're assuming that you'll have seven percent annual rate increases in the water fund through twenty thirty-two. And then unfortunately, we're looking at larger increases in twenty thirty-three and twenty thirty-four um based on the current assumption of what the water treatment plant will cost. If you are able to get um, you know, grant monies, if there are other things that come into play over the next seven, eight years, certainly you may not be looking at as large of an increase. Conversely, you might decide, you know, three or four years from now, okay, gee, it really is looking like these costs are real for the water treatment plant, and maybe we want to start increasing our annual rates by more than seven percent in order to reduce the kind of increase that will be necessary, you know, eight or nine years from now. This does factor in both the SDF and the user charges. So um while, you know, these are big numbers, again, there's a lot of things that could change between now and when you actually need to pay for that water treatment plant um and 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 so on. Uh, the current rate structure, you're familiar with it. You've got fixed charges. And then you've got consumption rates on top of the fixed charges that are same for all customer types. That's your current water rate structure. And then I think you're all familiar with the rationale for conservation rates. There's lots of ways to structure those, but of course, you're you're looking to do that because it can help with conservation, obviously, keeping more water in the river, but also the the longer you can um take to to, you know, serve grow your demand, the less, the longer you have to um build that additional infrastructure that's necessary. So it's good environmentally as well as financially. Okay. I know this is a little hard to read here. These are the fixed charges that are proposed per month based on what kind of water connection you have. And you can see how they range from um thirteen dollars for an ADU. Most, most connections will be twenty-six dollars per month and then ramping up to the very, very, very large users, you know, that are several hundred dollars per month or even a couple thousand dollars per month. Next slide. And then we did take into account water, uh, winter water usage as well. Um, looking at, you know, that setting that first tier a- add to what is the sort of the essential amount of water usage um in in making that affordable for residents. You know, that was really our primary target to make sure that residents were getting the value that they they deserve and need, and also that it wasn't going to be overly expensive for them to just have that essential water usage. This is more on the residential customer rate design. Uh, if you have any questions at any point, I know this is a lot of data. Um, we'd be happy to have follow-up conversations, but you know, for the for the sake of keeping this moving, I won't go into the minutia of every chart and and table here. Um, this is really just meant to demonstrate the work we did on the summer water usage, including irrigation and other outdoor uses and setting higher rates for those higher tiers of usage, especially in the summer months. Did a similar exercise for multifamily customers, um, separate from what single-family uh uses or users and 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 other users would be charged. Go to the next slide. And commercial customers as well. And I'm skipping ahead a little bit because this is sort of the punchline along with a couple of additional slides where we sort of pull all this information together uh for these different um user types, residential, multifamily, and commercial. And you can see that we look at different ranges of usage per month and the proposed fees per thousand gallons to come up with the annual revenues that would be collected from each of these user groups on an annual basis. So we're trying to, again, keep that water, essential water usage affordable. I think that's sort of a key talking point here, but also making sure that we have um adequate fund stability. On the sewer side, um, you can see here we've got also seven percent annual rate increases. Um, not as heavy of a lift on the sewer side because you don't have as many of those big ticket items. And it's really important to note that the Highway fifty sewer interceptor is being paid with those Salida and Pontcha Springs SDF fees. Next slide. So the current rate structure, again, fairly similar in that you have both fixed charges and consumption rates. On the sewer side, we can go to the next slide. Um, I know your eyes are probably starting to glaze over at this point. Mine are a little bit, uh, but you can see the the uh proposed rate structure options for uh the sewer side. Um, looking at simplifying that rate structure, having a base charge and then all users being char- charged the same base charge regardless of meter size or number of units. So that's one way in which the sewer rate's really different from the water rates. We can go on to the next. All right, so these are my, these are the 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 take-it-home slides here, the next couple of slides. We can go on to the next, alright, so these are my, these are the 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 take-it-home slides here, the next couple of slides. On the residential side, um, there's a lot of going on in this chart, but what you can see here is we've got. Um, market-rate apartments, and then we've got single-family homes using low, medium, and high. Usage of water, um, and then we do compare it to Pontchar Springs as well. And this combines your water and sewer rates, so the blue. Um, rates in the middle of the table are your existing rates. Uh, on a monthly basis in Slida, again, depending on your usage. And then you can see in the teal section at the bottom what we're proposing for your consideration. And the changes there um on a monthly basis, and so. For a median user that that those water and sewer charges in total are going to increase by about. Thirteen dollars per month. For a lower user, it would be about nine dollars per month, and for a market-rate apartment, you're actually seeing a drop of about thirty-one dollars per month. And then on the commercial side, which is the next slide. Similar format, we've got a a number of different um. Users in in particular, so you can see. Um, low-income apartments or affordable apartments, uh, low-use, commercial, median, commercial, high-commercial. Very high-commercial, um, and the usage of water there, the meter size. You can see some of those larger meter sizes. And then the existing rates are in the middle of the table again, and the increased uh or the the new rates with the increase. Are uh shown uh in the teal section. So obviously bigger numbers, but as percent as percentages, they're not massive increases um over what they're currently paying. And so in summary, again, uh, we look are looking looking at a water rate structure, restructure, excuse me, for twenty twenty-five. Seven, seven percent annual increases over the next several years. Again, a preliminary thirty percent increase in twenty thirty-three and thirty-four. Really, we'll need to take a closer look at that as we get closer to that m- major project. And then on the sewer side, again, not as much to deal with there, we're looking at restructuring and simplifying. And then seven percent increases um over the next six to seven years there as well. I think that's all I had, so would be happy to take any questions you have on the water and sewer side of things.
I do, just on the the slide right before this one, on page fifty-one. Um. My question kind of was about, and you answered some of it as we went. About how often a detailed rate study like this is done? And it says right here, recommended rate study update once capital costs are known. So how often are we going through a rate study in depth like this?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, if if growth in Slida and water usage in Slida and sewer usage in Slida. Tracks pretty closely with our estimates, and if those future capital costs. You know, come into focus more or less as we and the city team have anticipated. I I think you could go, you know, several years before a full refresh. Um, and 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 I I would say even if there are some. Variabilities, you you probably could go at at least two to three years before you would need to do. A full rate study, but if there are some things that come out of left field or. Let's say um your growth is much larger than this conservative estimate that we've used. Then um, we might want to look at it a little more, you know, uh, frequently, maybe every other year. So it kind of depends on how close reality tracks to our assumptions. I would certainly say that um, even if. Things are, you know, even if we've really. Shined up our crystal ball and in in the future, the next three, four, five years are pretty much on track, I would say that. You're for sure by. Twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, we should be, and no later than that, it would make sense to do a a full refresh.
Well, and that kind of goes with the question of the thirty percent increases for twenty thirty-three and thirty-four. Or the thirty percent increase, that's a lot.
Yeah.
I, it seems like we would do something before we got to, say, a thirty percent increase. On across the board on something like this, I mean, we're hopefully still be here by then. Twenty thirty-three and thirty-four, and thirty percent increase on top of what. It's already gone up four point five percent per year or four. I mean, I, that's kind of a big thing.
I think when we originally started this process, we had started to increase the fees a lot earlier. And we had a lot of heartache over that, you know, for a project that's several years out. Um, so we're hoping that we can identify grants, that growth is higher than. You know, where they are conservatively estimating it to be. And, you know, we're we're fingers crossed, hoping that the thirty percent increase is a worst case. And that we can turn it around to a better increase than that in the next several years.
Yeah.
But.
But but I would, I I agree completely with what Amy said, and um, you know, you're not. Unique here in having this big elephant. That's sitting out there eight, nine, ten years from now, um, but a lot of things can change in terms of alternative revenue sources. Um, growth, other factors that can make the the need for increases substantially smaller. And maybe you just want to sort of, you know, pick a target of, you know, twenty twenty-eight. Might be a good time, three years from now to really, if not before, taking uh taking another, you know. Careful look at this and saying, okay. What do we think about that thirty percent increase five years from now, because that's what it will be as of twenty twenty-eight? And, you know, what's our game plan for trying to dial that in?
Oh, I also wanted to chime in on that a little bit because um when it comes to a very large project like a new water plant or a sewer plant. There are several uh layers of engineering studies that need to be done, um. You know, uh, the cost of a water uh water plants, there are many different types of water plants, depending on the type of water you have to treat. One of the things we may need to deal with is, you know, potential for forest fire, you treat water differently if you're downstream of. You know, wildfire, train, and whatnot, so like. But looking at all those factors go into the different studies that need to happen over the next. Five to seven years, who we're doing in in the budget for twenty twenty-five is what's called an alternatives analysis, and so they start to look at. What type of plant we need to have, and as you get a couple of years down the road, such as, you know, Bruce mentioned, twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine. I think there'll be a lot better information and more refined cost, uh, you know, that number's. You know, not going to be exactly what's noted here, this is more planning and to start putting money in the bank essentially to allow for. Um, this engineering to start occurring, so.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Um, Bruce, I'm curious with the water rates, if you get two thousand gallons with your base rate. Uh, and you use three thousand gallons, do you get the two thousand at the lower rate, or it all shifts to the higher rate? The whole three thousand to the higher rate?
No, you get the two thousand at the base rate, and then what's o- what's over that would be at the variable rate.
Thank you, so it's very much like tax rates.
Got it.
Um, Bruce, I was looking over the user impacts, the commercial table, and noticed that we have low-income apartments. Under commercial, and I was just curious as to um.
Yeah, council member, I was curious about that as well, and I don't have a good answer for you, um, it's actually near the end. Um, near the very end, yep, there we go. Um, I'll have to get back to you on that, or unless Amy or David might know off the top of your head why, why that's in this. Category.
I think that's how we've treated them.
Okay.
In the past. I I don't know what the logic is on that, other than it's somebody who owns apartments and, you know, running them is a commercial business.
One owner of of all apartments?
I I. I think, and this is the first time I've looked at this more than a second, um, but I think it has to do with the fact that. Um, if it's an apartment building, it goes off a commercial rate, just in general, whether it's market rate or where it's low income. But the um. There may be further deductions based off of the affordability that's built into that, so. It's really hard for me to give you an answer, just kind of looking at this real quick, I'd have to study it for a little bit longer, but.
Certainly circle back, though, it's all in the study, it's just.
The market-rate apartments are in the residential accounts.
Yeah, and they're getting a deduction.
Yeah, it, so the previous slide, Christie, we see.
Yeah.
Market-rate apartment, residential, and they're decreased thirty dollars, almost thirty-one and. The lower income apartments are increased.
Shouldn't they either be both in residential or both in commercial, but not one in each?
This is assuming a five-eighths inch meter size, three units, whereas the other one's assuming eight units.
Right.
If you go to the next slide, you can see it's a larger meter. I I assume just, we just take a a a look at what we are we're doing across the board on multifamily, I I I I know there's a logic there, but. We can certainly circle back with a with an explanation of that.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Um, other questions? That's a lot of information. I think we're good, thank you.
The council memo says that the rate study is going to be presented immediately after this meeting, is because. Originally, this was going to be approved um at our last meeting where we had a work session, a regular meeting, but tomorrow night, you'll see the rate study. I mean, the actual rate schedule, and hopefully we'll have some questions for you on the the apartments, but. Anyhow, it makes it a little clearer to see everything on one sheet, so take a take a peek at it.
Thanks for moving it, thanks for not putting it on last meetings.
Yeah, eleven o'clock was late enough.
Alright, well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
You.